The Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments?
We do. We have one registered for item two A.
Okay, wait till we get to that item. Items to be placed in a regular city commission agenda, the minutes there from our October eighteenth regular meeting, and then Commissioners as a proclamation honoring Native American Heritage Month in November. You have the opportunity to read over those. You okay with moving that on to Wednesday's agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, that will move us on to item two A, which is to consider a request from Ottawa Community Partnership Inc., OCPI, to participate in the Legacy Campaign with purchase of park properties in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Director Landis, come on up, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I know in your packet you received a memo that was similar to what you've received at the previous meetings. You've also heard in some of your previous meetings from the community organization about the request. Just to touch on a few of those reminders, I think it's good in case there's anyone new listening that you've had a conversation about this topic on, starting on October fourth, the sixteenth, the eighteenth, and the twenty-third, and now again today at today's meeting. So we've covered quite a bit of ground on in each of those meetings. As to the purpose of the request, and the request that's in front of you is to purchase the parks and the green space located at one twenty-five South Walnut Street and two oh-two West First Street, which are associated with the Legacy Square properties or that area. And that ultimately by by proceeding in this manner, we are helping to kick off the Legacy Campaign, which will, which is intended to connect Legacy Square to Main Street through the purchase of a connecting walkway property and some improvements to those properties, as well as other improvements downtown. All of that information has been presented to you in a request document from Onward Ottawa and OCPI, and that was in your packet included as well. The request of you was the commission back to city staff was that we identify funds in order to accomplish this task and the this purchase. And the idea that was brought to you was to use the American Rescue Plan Act funds or a portion of the remaining funds. And in your packet, there's a breakdown of what is, what has been spent to date and what remains to date. The the total amount that the city received was just around one point eight million. To date, you've committed dollars to multiple projects and then have discussed additional projects as for use of the remaining funds. Right now, the available funds that are technically uncommitted but have been discussed is nine hundred and six thousand approximately. Those funds do have to be used by, or they need to be committed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four and used no later than December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And if you have questions specifically about those funds, I'm happy to answer them, or I can, I can go into greater detail. Again, the request is to participate in the Legacy Campaign with the completion of Legacy Square in an amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents, which would result in the acquisition of the park spaces at the locations I mentioned earlier and with the use of available ARPA funds. With that, City Manager Selkot and I are happy to answer any questions you might have from the city side.
Commissioners, any questions for Director Landis or City Manager? Director Landis, I've received a couple of emails about other options for using these ARPA funds. And one of them is always the ORC. Is there, is there a possibility that ARPA funds could be used for any kind of funding for the ORC?
At the very beginning of our process, I want to back up before I answer you. At the very beginning of our process, we talked about the the requirement that if you're going to open up ARPA funds to outside groups or agencies, that you needed to open it up to everyone. You would have an application process. You would determine how many dollars would be allocated to them, and then they would be considered sub recipients of those federal grant dollars. So if you were going to do that, we would want to open a process, determine how much money you would allocate to outside agencies, open a process, allow everyone to apply, and then determine what your priorities were amongst those applications, and then you could allocate dollars that way. They'd be held to the same requirements. We would be as far as spending goes, which is determining that those those dollars were being used in an appropriate way with appropriate either bidding or source vending vendors. So there's a variety of rules that would go along with that. It's not, not that we could just say we're going to allocate this to one agency or another.
Thank you. I know I similarly received communication, and I I got a lot of questions on why we're not putting more of these funds, I guess, towards capital improvement, things that we already have in place and plans. I know someone brought up that we moved, I forgot about this, something for the cemeteries from twenty-four to twenty-five because we didn't have funds available in the general fund. And so that's just, I know, similarly, things that have been brought up to me as well that this is a large expense outside of kind of the CIP in terms of that as well.
Yes, and in ARPA funds, you can, the the rules apply that we can use them on on capital projects, capital purchases. And we have done that with some to date. We participated in the purchase of the OMA sign, but we also engaged in a contract for providing backup power to the to the water plant, as well as doing the UV disinfection system at the wastewater utility. So I only list those as an example, that there's a variety of ways that you can use those funds. They're not incredibly restricted, other than there's some rules that we need to make sure we're following to make for reporting purposes and such.
And did we, I know we had a short timeline, obviously, with going to the county with a request for, you know, potential partnership through them with any of those transit tax dollars. I wasn't sure. I hadn't heard if there was.
Yes, and reaching out to the county, they originally participated with a cash contribution and felt that that was the extent of their participation at this stage.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Director Landis or City Manager?
So the the county's response was that, and they did, in fact, make a cash donation. But however, that was not monies that were from transient guest tax. So just to note to the public, it's, I mean, transient guest taxes is a tax that is added on to every hos- or not hospital, excuse me, hotel stay that we have in our city. And actually, that tax is then then put into our tourism fund, which the county holds. Every single, as far as I know, every single hotel within the county is located within our city. And just disappointed that they're choosing not to utilize that guest tax on, which is a tourism tax on helping to support this project.
In speaking with my colleague, he did express and voiced support and an interest in participating in mutually beneficial projects in the future. So I wouldn't, you know, in in this situation, it is unfortunate that they would choose not to participate and utilize those transient guest tax funds. But I also think that we do have some opportunities for future projects down the road that that may bear us for for joint partnerships, so.
I as well, following along, I do do want to say that I definitely think that OCPI is a great community partner. I appreciate. I love Legacy Square. I think it's terrific. I appreciate everything that's been done to this point. So I really hope that any, I guess, negative negativity, I guess, you feel towards this project. I don't want it to to seem that way. I think this is great. I know I personally just kind of see this as something really geared towards tourism, towards bringing people to town and looking at, you know, Kansas revenue that there was two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars last year in that transient guest tax. I I would be remiss to not look at some other projects I think we already have on the books personally with these funds. I think there's a lot of things on the CIP that are important. I think they're on the CIP because they're important. And so as much as I would love to do this project and do this, and I think it's a great acquisition for the city, I know I will have a harder time approving that when these funds, I think, could go a lot further towards community good being used towards a lot of other smaller projects.
I have to agree. I feel very similar manner. I, you know, I worry that we've almost taken on some project, well, such as the golf course that I know is going to be a big expense that we hadn't necessarily planned on. And, you know, when I think about this amount going towards that or or capital improvements, it does make me worry that we're spreading ourselves a little bit too thin with things such as this. I do want to see Legacy Square succeed, and I love the space, and I love going to concerts there. But it just makes me worry financially how much we've put in so far in kind, we'll say. I mean, if I want to word it, and then donate even more, so.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Director Landis or City Manager?
I guess I'll put in my two cents on this. I I kind of look at this as an artery to our our downtown. I think as people congregate at Legacy Square, this will be, I know we've got First and Second Street leased to downtown, but this is more of an enticement to lead to the downtown, where I've talked to many merchants, and they seem to think that this would be a good way to bring more foot traffic to downtown, hopefully, and to spend some more money there as well. So at this point, I'm in favor of it.
One thing I will say, being new to the community and onboarding into my position, I didn't fully understand or appreciate that Legacy Square, and I think there's a public perception, as it was my perception, is not or was not a public park and that it's something that is our our staff is charged with maintaining, or at least if not maintaining outright, receiving the initial concerns and issues from residents and users when facilities aren't adequately maintained. And I think that having a volunteer nonprofit group responsible for maintaining a a a public park could further complicate maintenance issues down the road that we may be ultimately inheriting at some point at a greater cost. And so I I would just want to put that out there that at some point down the road, we may be readdressing this issue at an even more costly amount. We know that it's currently appraised at over one point three million. And ultimately, we could purchase the two pieces. And whether or not the connecting link is successful, then at that point, the city, at least, we have clear maintenance delineation, and we know who's responsible for what. And as we know from our discussions with the ORC and then in trying to discern what are our responsibilities and what are not our responsibilities, and how do we refund and maintain those? And so in an effort to try and and provide funds, whether it's this item or, you know, the Safe Haven Baby Box or our our larger, you know, road and infrastructure projects. One thing that I know is certain, and it's this way across the state, regardless of jurisdiction, and that's that that we want to do our best to maintain as low as possible a mill levy and to provide the highest quality service, which our our neighbors rightfully expect. And that in so doing, we are under constant pressure to provide incentives so that we can create assess valuation that won't come up in the book for another ten to twenty to sometimes twenty-five years, at which time infrastructure improvements are required, but which none of those properties have actually paid into to receive those improvements. So from a a staff standpoint, one thing I would ask you to consider is what the perception is, what our maintenance is going forward, who, in the event that an item out there needs to be replaced on the playground equipment or at at, you know, the facility itself, just north of the parking structures, who's responsible for that? And and how are we going to recover that cost eventually if it's not ours? And I think this clears that up and also then pays the way for us to begin moving toward the obligations that we know we already have with respect to like the ORC and and other other provisions that we need to be maintaining as well. So that's just from a practical standpoint. It it kind of takes the politics and the political dynamic aside and looks at it from a practical day-to-day approach.
You know, when I joined this commission over a decade ago, and Mr. Dorrington was on there with me and Commissioner Skidmore, too. I remember many a times that we had conversations about the OMA. It was basically a box. Nobody was using it. Nothing was happening with it. It was nothing. And thanks to some great staff and some really great vision, the OMA is a really, really wonderful place now to be in. That took vision. So about ten years ago or so, you know, we started hearing, there's no place to have any public events. There's no place to have a wedding reception. There's no place to have a reunion. There's no place to have this or that. No place, no place, but place. Now we have those. That took vision. So this group of community leaders that really came in and invested in this project, not only their time, but their talent and their treasure, that began all with the charrettes that we had, where community came in and voted and said what was important to them. And they voted that this was their most important project. Those community leaders are really inside the arena and championing it at no benefit to themselves. I mean, that's why we have community leaders every single week with us, saying, hey, this is important to me. So I I think we need to, we're always asking for leadership and asking for help and asking for input. This is input. This is input. Coming to this meeting is input, and we need to listen to that. You know, in nineteen sixty-six, the city voters decided that they wanted to build a pool. And they passed a bond to take out a bond for under two hundred thousand dollars to build the current pool we have now. If we actually take that dollar amount and advance that to twenty twenty-three, it's almost two million dollars. Is it, is the pool had some return on investment? Yeah, I'd say it has. Have we all swam there? Yeah, we have. Did that hundred and under, just under two hundred thousand dollars hurt at that time in nineteen sixty-six? I'm guessing it did. I guess for some people, they were like, wow, that's a lot of money. That is a ton of money, and it was, and it is now. But I think we have to remember what the vision is and that what the vision is of Legacy Square. And so if we consider we, with what Melanie brought to us, none of those costs were costs that we wouldn't have had at any parking lot that we had. We were going to resurface. We've resurfaced every parking lot. Every year we do this. We would have paid for stormwater improvements at every public or every space that the city of Ottawa owns. We would have made alleyway improvements at every single place that we are. We're responsible for all of these things. None of them are over, I mean, they're not inflated. Nothing to, nothing that really gives me major heartache. So when we look at the total project of six million dollars and about eight percent is what is what this group of community leaders is asking us as the city, and when it's not us, it's everyone in the city to contribute, I don't think it's a bad deal. I I understand, and I've heard from those, too, and I'm assuming that we all heard from some similar, some similar voices. But I don't want to at all diminish the voices that we have heard and maybe have been silent, but have been here in present.
Commissioners, do you want to, Representative from OCPI?
There's a public comment, too.
Yeah, yeah. Is there one? I didn't know if you had any other questions for any Representative from OCPI. Okay, we'll move on to the public comment.
Rachel Sylvester?
Rachel, you want to come on up, please? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, it's Rachel Sylvester, fourteen fifteen Pine Court.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, I'm here to comment on the OCPI, the extension of that money. I'm just a constituent. I don't have any, I've never even been to a city commission meeting, and I would love to be involved in city commission. But I would say I'm here as a mom, and it's hard for moms to get here. It was hard for me to get here today. And so I feel like that's a voice that's underrepresented here, but not intentionally. It's just because logistically we can't make it here. So I just wanted to make a point that I've lived here for seven years, and my husband Wes has lived here his whole life, except for college and when we lived in Iowa and Wichita. So we've been a little bit of everywhere. And this is just, this seems like a lot of money, and we have a lot of dreams. And normally, I'm bothering the ORC about it, but I've recently kind of learned how that works in Ottawa. And you helped clear that up for me last week, that technically they don't own anything. So I feel a little bad that I've bothered them so much. But I'm really passionate about a pool. I'm really passionate about a splash pad. We have a special needs son, so having an indoor warm pool for therapies would be a huge thing for a town, no matter the size. Just because you live in a small town doesn't mean that you have to go without. We spend a ton of time in Kansas City, and he's a member at the Britton Center in Kansas City. But it would be really cool to have those things in Ottawa. So anyways, I a hundred percent understand and hear what you're saying about it paying four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Legacy Square. I've never been an anti-Legacy Square person. I thought it was really exciting. When we first moved here, there were no Starbucks, and they, you know, it took vision to really like push Ottawa forward. And now I see a ton of stuff that I thought would be really cool that's now here. It's not that I don't like Legacy Square. It's just that I I would not, I don't take my kids there every day. For me, it's a parking lot every day, and I do understand the the infrastructure issues, and I'm not here to speak on that. So I do understand that perspective. But I'm really just here to say, could we use those funds for families like us, for splash pads, for the pool? I know it would be a really quick turnaround to pass a bond for a pool in two years. Like, I know that money has to be allocated and all that. We don't have a soccer complex. Like, we had to go out of, we didn't have to, but we chose to go out of the city to do more competitive soccer this year. I think having a designated soccer area with more than two bathrooms would look really good for Ottawa. We don't really want to bring people in here personally for tournaments if we don't have the infrastructure. Just as a mom, I I go to these tournaments, and we immediately spend money. We immediately go to restaurants. We go to coffee shops, and if we were bringing people in, I'm sorry, if we were bringing people in, I think that we would immediately cash flow. So that's all I'm saying about the investment.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments at this point, whether it be what's the Finance Director, City Manager, and anyone else?
I I do want to bring up what we talked about last week, because I'm not sure, Rachel, if you heard this or not. But I mean, as a mom, I get, yeah, I I get it. And yeah, my kids were in in preschool when I started on the commission. I get it, how hard it is to get here. So thank you for being here. But aquatics, we're not going to build a pool for four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We're not going to build a pool for a million dollars. It's just not going to happen. But aquatics is is on the commission's radar. We have had conversations the last couple of years. I don't know how it's going to, where it's going to go from there, but it is. We have committed to, and actually, it's in our budget, to have a splash pad here this year. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that your kids are going to be out in a splash pad next two days, or would you let them be out there? Not that kids wouldn't try, because they certainly would. Mine would probably, too. But aquatics is important. Yeah, and it's not about choosing this over aquatics.
Commissioners, any other discussion? If not, what would you like to do with item two A?
Mr. Mayor, I will say that I do appreciate a lot of the public comments that have come in. This has certainly stirred a lot of emotions and a lot of comments, and and I really do appreciate the process and the way this has been dealt with and the comments that have been coming in. I hope everybody feels free to reach out to us as commissioners, and I think they have. And I wish they would more on different topics so we could appeal to the community. But with all that said, I will say we'll make the motion, and we'll prove item two A on our agenda.
What's that, do you have a motion?
Yes, practical execution of that motion would be that I would draft a, an MOU between the city and OCPI to clarify things like ensuring that the city is acquiring the real estate. So I think for today, if you want to do a motion, that's fine. Maybe the motion is to direct me to draft the MOU, and if that passes, then then we'll go forward that way. If it doesn't pass, you basically back in the discussion that you just had in a different way, maybe more of it.
Yes, I would amend that motion. I was thinking that it should be subject to the purchase of that real estate. But the MOU would be a great idea. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify on this as well, if fundraising were to potentially fail, and we've committed, what does that look like, I guess, in the end? If that project is not able to go through after, if funding is not acquired?
We purchased two public parks.
So we would still acquire the two parks. We would just not acquire the sound system and then the capacitor.
Correct. Any other discussion? If not, can I have a roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Graves? No. Commissioner Clayton?
No.
Mayor Protim Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Crowley?
I vote yes. Motion is approved. Thank you. All right, got to move us on to item two B, Safe Haven Baby Box Financial Contribution Request. Director Landis? Thank you all for showing up again today. We appreciate your time as always.
All right, this this item was brought to you by a, by two of two residents that came in to ask or to talk with you about placing a Safe Haven Baby Box. And that, the the very first conversation was way back in May, and we talked about the logistics of that. And then there's been some work done in the background with these, with these individuals and and probably some planning done and and some
and, and probably some planning done and, and some conversations with our, with our fire department, our fire chief and, and his staff. And then um, at your October twenty-third meeting, they came back to ask for a contribution of five thousand dollars towards the placement of that Safe Haven Baby Box, and um, in the memo that was in your packet, we just talked a little bit about the, the request itself and the legislation that is specific. Um, it talks specifically about the Newborn Infant Protection Act, and that's where you would find the legislation pertaining to the installation of the baby boxes and how that might, that might be um, managed, I guess, or, or implemented overall. In the process of our conversation, we identified two things. One, you, you asked us to um, come back with some ideas as to how you, we might be able to fund that contribution, should you decide to contribute. And then also, as we were um, having even further conversations amongst staff, we realized we probably need to do a lot more um, deep diving into the logistics of the placement of the box, the risk to the city, the all of the things that you would, you would normally expect from a conversation like that, especially if it were to be installed in a city facility. Um, and what our obligations were to that process and the safety of that, that newborn. So, um, to circle back to the financial consideration, the five thousand dollar contribution request came to you um, as as requested to, to fund the um, the project itself, and these types of requests coming from the public would typically be handled or paid for, um, should you choose to contribute out of your community service fund, and those, that would be an appropriate place to, to pay for this if you chose to contribute. That fund is um, largely funded by transfers which come in from your water, your wastewater, your electric utilities, and your general fund. And so uh, there is fifty-five hundred dollars that is budgeted annually in a line item that's just um, considered special request or somewhat of a reserve, so that if you were to choose to fund any type of pro- additional request that came in, it could be funded from there. There has not been anything spent from that line item yet this year. Um, the same amount is budgeted in twenty-four, and so our, our um, our suggestion is that you allow us to go back and do a little more research into the project itself. Maybe give you yourselves a little more time to consider the contribution, once you were able to bring back more information to you about just the project itself and the requirements of the city, um, go back and further study H B twenty-twenty-four, um, that was passed in, in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and um, bring you back a full recommendation if, if that would be okay.
Commissioners, you okay with that? Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item C is the city commission meeting date discussion. Now, city manager?
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, uh, this was, we've discussed this on a technically uh, two separate occasions where it was mentioned that it was in consideration, and then uh, an, an update at our October sixteen uh, study session, and uh, you know, we discussed a couple of different options, whether that was reducing the number of Monday meetings or consolidating all for consistency and kind of ease of remembering, and also for everyone's schedules. Uh, perhaps compacting all of our meetings into Wednesdays. So we would look at a couple of different scenarios I present in here. Of course, we can cut the pie, however you would so choose if this is something you wanna proceed with, but uh, you know, we currently use an old business, new business, and, and again, the uh, old business is essentially what occurs first, and, and that's for items that are um, ongoing in discussion and in which the commission had previously addressed. And at that time, uh, further discussion, action, or voting can occur. And then new business being uh, new topics, issues, or items that uh, we haven't presented, and they can be brought up here, and of course, if there's a extenuating circumstance that needs to be addressed, then the rules can be suspended, and the commission can then take uh, adoption in, on the new business as a, uh, as a first-time item. And then obviously, there are certain maybe serialized actions that we would drop into old business, and what I'm thinking of specifically are uh, debt issuances and, and items like that, where you're considering and adopting a series of uh, resolutions and or ordinances, depending upon if it's conversion from a temporary note to general obligation financing or, or whatnot that uh, that may um, reflect uh, an actual um, resolution or something that, that wasn't a first read, but was part of a a uh, multi-step process, which would uh, be identified in the background as far as okay for a temporary note or special obligations under K S A, whatever, that this is the first of three, and that this, you know, second is anticipated to be presented at what, whichever date, and then at the subsequent meeting citing when the first um, uh, resolution calling for the offering was issued, and then uh, and the date that it was uh, was approved, and then that we're on the second of three, and when we anticipate the third being presented. So that's kinda how we would, would keep that current. The second item uh, that I presented is, is the multi, multiple read um, process, and that's essentially where you have a first read and a second read. And communities across the country do this in, in different ways. The vast majority utilize the old business, new business, because there are some, say like in the state of Texas or California, where if they're undergoing this, where they'll be required to have a public hearing uh, for consideration under the uh, the, the multi-read. We're not obligated to anything like that. It would simply be a, a first reading and half comments, much like we did uh, previously for the uh, consideration of the O C P I request, so that, that would be how we would look to uh, to address business under, under that uh, method, if that's something that you would want to, to look at. Um, again, uh, I would recommend if we were looking to consolidate and simplify, that we would simply go to four um, regular meetings with an old business, new business approach. And that would obviously require our um, city attorney to draft an amending ordinance uh, to our municipal code to implement that change, and I will, at this point, um, turn it over to our city attorney to address that process, or, um, and then uh, to obviously answer uh, any questions that uh, you might have of either uh, the city attorney or myself.
As far as process goes, it would just be a standard ordinary ordinance, we'd get that to you and set your meeting dates.
Commissioners, hearing all that, and I know there's some options in here, what are your feelings on some of these changes? Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore, would you like to go first?
Well, I guess that I just, I couldn't hear uh, our counselor very well, but I think I understood that if we needed to call a special meeting, if we had one agenda, we could obviously do that anytime. We just have to notify the public ahead of time, right?
Yes, that's correct. You always have the option of having a special call meeting.
I, I can see I, I can see on Mondays, uh, sometimes uh, if people wanna take a three-day weekend, Monday kinda interferes with Monday meetings. I can see some benefit of having him on Wednesdays, uh, just to, uh, I just wanna make sure that was uh, brought up. But also the fact that we can have a special call meeting if we need to, I understand.
I, I feel like in this is, me personally, it makes it for a much easier work schedule um, to not have to leave work every Monday at four. I'm not sure our staff would probably feel the same way as well, but uh, so work-wise for um, that I really am in favor of moving it all to Wednesdays and, and the times listed.
I too would be in favor of moving it to Wednesdays. I, um, one thing I do want us to consider is that um, if we think about, and not that you can't teach an old dog new tricks, but Commissioner Skidmore and I have gone through um, many years of budgets, and um, it seems like you need every single meeting to go through budgets. I'm wondering if we might not want to um, consider doing every Wednesday instead of, and including the fifth Wednesday. Uh, yeah, I did a little um, computation. Um, the way that we're doing it now, we're meeting just about uh, right around seventy meetings a year. Um, if we were to um, go to the Wednesday meetings with just four meetings um, a month, we would meet forty-eight times a year. So, but if we had the Wednesday meetings, including a fifth Wednesday, which in twenty-twenty-four is only going to happen four times, and in twenty-twenty-five would happen five times, um, we would have fifty-two meetings. Now, the, what I bring, why I bring that up is that two of those in twenty-twenty-four are in May and July, right more in the smack dab in the middle of budget series or budget hearings and hearing about the budget. And I think that we could really utilize having those extra Wednesdays to hear about the budget. Um, that is, our go, our job as commissioners is to um, is to pass a budget and to um, and to create policy, which the budget is policy. Um, and I think it's important that we keep that fifth Wednesday in there, because I think we're gonna need it May and July.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, one of the options that would be available is, as we said, you'd have special meetings. Twenty-four, that fifth Wednesday may fall in budget season, in future years it may not. You could have a situation where you had five meetings in December, for example, uh, and then you didn't need, you can cancel those. You can also just set your meetings as the first four Wednesdays of the month, and then do special calls for those fifth Wednesdays that occurred during budget season, so that you can uh, you may even wanna vary the time on those. You may want additional times. Sometimes you do two-hour meetings on budget time, you may start earlier, so I would say if that's the direction you wanna go, you might not wanna handcuff yourself, but you have to cancel when they don't line up with budget season, but just allow yourself to call the special meetings during budget season. Um, and, and maybe even at a different time or earlier time, so that you can press through on budgets.
Or you just in favor of every Wednesday, no matter what it is, whether it's a December or a G?
At least we know for the next two years, they will both happen within budget, budget.
I mean.
I mean, during, during the fifth Wednesdays would happen, and I get what you're saying, and yes, um, I, I guess um, if I'm kind of yielding to what um, Commissioner Graves says, if I know that I need to schedule from my work to be out every single Wednesday, that's great. And then I can schedule that, but to do a special call meeting, I gotta tell you, um, in my line of work, special call meetings are are problematic, are very problematic. Um, because I, I make a commitment to see patients, and um, if I know that that commitment can't be made on Wednesday here forward, then that's easier. That's just much like I do today. I mean, I just, I commit that I can't see patients after X amount of time on a Monday. I also would like to, and I, I'm glad that our um, city attorney brought that up. I do think that I would like us to consider still having um, a, either a morning meeting or a earlier meeting than four P M. We have several times a year, we have school classes that come here. They actually bring their class here and learn about um, how democracy works. And I do think it's important that possibly we need to think about yielding to, uh, making sure that we can appeal to all kinds of constituencies. I think the seven P M is critical, and I, and I do think possibly a morning meeting um, should be considered. But I'm fine with all Wednesdays.
Commissioner.
I would agree. I think all Wednesdays is just so much simpler. I get asked a lot by people, like, when the meetings are, and it's hard to be like, okay, well, what, what Wednesday is this? Every seven P M or ten, you know, like, I think it's confusing for people who don't really know. I think it's, you know, I, I sometimes I'm like, is this the fourth Wednesday? What?
Yeah.
It's Wednesday, um, so I think basically every Wednesday just simplifies the whole process. Um, I as well think it's, it's tough, and I, since I got on the commission, I've really been thinking about what are the best times, and I don't think there's a great answer, 'cause it's sure it ebbs and flows. Um, to keep these meetings available to the general public, people who, who work, people who have kids. Um, so I think that evening meeting is perfect, that it gives people an opportunity to come who otherwise couldn't. Um, but it also respects commissioners who have, you know, to report to an employer and take time off. Um, and also I think for our staff as well, I don't know what the overall consideration would be in terms of you know, overtime, if we have employees who are coming to meetings, who would be staying longer than scheduled shifts potentially. Um, but I think, I think that keeping every Wednesday one at seven P M, and then figuring out something potentially earlier in the day, like you'd said, for, for others.
I certainly, I'm in favor too of every Wednesday. I just think making it easier, you know, to, to, like you say, every Wednesday, we know what time, you know, it's going forward. The only thing I wrote down, and I, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Commissioner Kayler, is that I, I still think we should keep that ten A meeting. You know, just because uh, it, you, you, there's folks that, as you've said for years, there's folks that can make the seven, that can't make the ten, or the ten, that can't make the seven, so um, I just, I think that we could switch it up a little bit, eliminate a few meetings, um, but still make it somewhat similar to what we've had for a long time, so.
With going every, every Wednesday, we're going from seventy-two meetings to fifty-two meetings. We're cutting out two meetings, two meetings a month.
Yep.
We estimate two meetings a month.
Which, if we can kind of elaborate a little bit on that, and I think you could, 'cause you've said it best before. To re, we're not having this discussion because we're trying to make our workload lighter. It's not about us. It's about you know, the, the, the directors in the city, the, the, the department heads that have to gather up the information for meetings, that we come here and we said it for seven minutes. You know, and we, you know, we're excited about it, 'cause you know, we're, we're in and out, but you know, there's a lot of, of, of hard work that goes on behind the scenes. As we say, you know, when we, when we review reports and stuff, that these, these folks are doing, that they could be focused on other stuff instead of, you know, gathering information that might not even be important for us, that seven minutes that we're here, that meeting. So it's not necessarily about what, you know, trying to make it easier on us, we're trying to make it easier on staff.
And I, I think it's fair that how many things happen over the weekend that they're trying to catch up on on Monday. We all have that. I mean, Mondays are Mondays, and I think we all have those. Um, and understanding that this gives them more time to better prepare for these meetings, which helps us, I think, be better prepared as well.
I'm sure if you ask some of them, they're probably working on some of this information over the weekends, so it might be more enjoyable for their families that they're not.
Yeah.
And, and this is not on here, and I didn't bring this up to anybody before. This, and this may not be the time or place to talk about this, but um, I also wonder if we might not wanna talk about if we're trying to clean things up. Um, do we wanna talk about with this swearing in of new commissioners and about, I know that we already have it when it's supposed to happen. I know that there's some other cities that actually do it in December. Um, I think that we kinda do it at the very last, when, when it switched from April to January. I think we kinda chose the very last date that we could actually swear in, so I don't know if there's any value into if there's a new commissioner coming on, is there value into having um, that person sworn in, in December, and have a little bit of time to drink from the fire hose in lieu of coming in in January, and then like in thirty days, we're straight into the budget. So it gives them an extra, an extra few days. And honestly, I, I can, I haven't put a great deal of thought into it. Um, just something I wanted to throw out, since we're also kinda talking about processes.
I, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of moving it forward if you'd like. I mean, uh, the, the election this year is November seventh. You know, so that person that wins the election, you know, uh, is setting their idol for two months. You know, while the other person's setting there knowing they're, they're out the, out the door pretty soon, so I think maybe to have that transition sooner, you know, uh, after the election might be beneficial for both parties. Is there a?
I don't know if that statute's uniformed, I'm, I'm not sure you didn't charter out.
Okay.
So I need to, I need to go up into that for you. Um, this time theoretically is probably not gonna be an issue. We're probably gonna have three incumbents returning. Um, so, you know, you'll all be in office and remain more than likely. Um, and, and so I think we have some time to work through that one, but can certainly do some research on that.
I do think that's certainly fair, though, being someone who came on late spring. I do think that's certainly fair though, have, being someone who came on late spring. You know, being appointed, it was, I sat down and then. And it, last year was definitely a lot and so I think. Any extra days you can get to get acclimated to being on and prepped, especially for. Someone who's not an incumbent, someone who's new to the whole process, I think would be invaluable time. So I would definitely be in favor of removing that up.
Well, we've got a, after this, you know, election in November, we've got a couple of years to discuss it. So, uh, certainly something I think that we, we, we need to have that discussion of. So, thank you for bringing that up.
I guess I was just trying to. I, I was trying to get us to have to print it less. Because we have a printing cost every single time we make these changes and I'm like, gosh, we could just make a change.
It would be a different. So I don't, it would not be by ordinary ordinance. If it's not uniformed, it would be a charter ordinance subject to the. Extra publications and sixty things notice. So, it, there'll be two different ordinances.
Have we had a conversation about when? If we make a change here, what that, um, when that would be effective?
Yeah, that, sorry, and thank you for bringing that up. Um. I, I, well, how, how would you feel?
I'm just wondering what.
I think January one would be a good starting date. I think starting new from, from the beginning of the year would be a good starting date.
I sense to me.
Yeah, I think that's cleaning.
I don't know, we can do it any faster, honestly, with, if we have to.
Commissioners, for sake of drafting, I'm going to begin with meeting, you want to have a ten A M?
I think this day, yeah.
Yeah, third Wednesday.
Seven P, four P, ten A M, four P M, and the fifth.
Potentially four P M.
Yes.
Everything's on four except for first and third.
Yes. Thank you. And uh consensus of January one or I don't have a calendar that far back.
Still, it happened in January one at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is a Monday, so. Fresh week.
Any other discussion? Do you have enough information to move forward on? Thank you. All right, comments by our city, uh, city manager?
None at this time, sir.
Thank you. Comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
I just wanted to make a quick comment about um the vote from earlier. And just that, uh, the vote that I give um always reflects what I've heard. Uh, from citizens and so I definitely do not want to see that project fail. And I really look forward to seeing what they can do and I wish them. The most success in fundraising and um hopefully it'll be a beautiful space. Um, I just didn't want it to feel negative towards that at all. It's just um. One hundred percent of the comments I heard were not in paper of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kayler?
I, I feel like every year I make the same exact comment right around Halloween, but. Please look out for our little citizens tomorrow. They're not looking for you. They are not, they are probably not going to have. Um, not everyone's gonna have a flashlight with them. Not everyone's gonna have that glow-in-the-dark bracelet or necklace. Um, and they're super excited to be out there regardless of how cold it's going to be. They're still excited to get that Snickers bar. I hope they're all giving away full. Full Snickers bars. I'm not, but just I'm saying, somebody might be. Um. And uh, so just look out for our little citizens tomorrow. There, um, it's an exciting day for, for kids to trick or treat. And I'm, I'm really hoping that our community gets back to trick or treating. I know that we had kind of a quiet couple of years there with COVID, but. Um, certainly something I look forward to every year.
Well, if you were downtown over the weekend, it was pretty busy down Main Street, so um, that was great to see, so. Commissioner Clayton?
I stole my thunder about downtown, but it's okay. Um, it was a great turnout even with the cold, so that's always exciting to see and. You know, like you'd mentioned, getting people back out. I, I have some great memories growing up in town. Walking around trick or treating and I think it's great. Tomorrow, we probably won't see that with the cold. I don't know if we're gonna see that influx. Um. But it's just exciting. It's truly the kickoff to the holiday season. So here comes Mariah Carey um in two days. So.
Actually at the O M A or no?
I don't know. She's with Taylor. She's.
At the O M A?
Yes, yeah. Um, but yes, just reiterating that as well, that you know, it's, it's getting to that, that time of year. Um, and definitely be, you know, keep your eyes out tomorrow as you're driving around, um, because they definitely don't, so.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore?
Sure, uh, yeah, for Halloween, I'm going to be a grandpa, I think. So that's one of my costumes. That should work out good for me. I just want to say congratulations on my K U fan friends for a great win. I was actually cheering you on. And I do have a question. I watched the Chiefs game. What's the difference between the Chiefs' offense and a dollar bill? At least a dollar bill will give you four good quarters. Right? That's how it turned out.
You shouldn't laugh out loud, city managers. God, we've all learned.
I know, I know, but sometimes the truth.
Sorry, you have a bad connection.
Sporting game is too good.
You know, we did have, speaking of, we had a, an, of K State. We had an Ottawa that was shown on the ESPN game. I mean. Not four, five, six times in the, in the crowd. It was awesome. So, it was good. I'm, yeah, I, I figured, I should have sent you a picture, Commissioner Skidmore. Sorry, I will send it right now.
Please do. That's all I had.
All right.
This is, is my grandson Leo here.
I have no comments to add. I do have a couple of announcements. November first at eight A M, we have our Chamber Eggs and Issues Breakfast at Advent Health. And then also November first, we have our seven P M City Hall regular meeting. Is there anything else to come before the commission this evening? I'll adjourn.